NFP Corp., Requisition of Health Insurance. Go on up. Sorry about that.
Maybe you could just have all three identified.
Sure.
So Ken Lombardi from NFP.
Marcia Carnes, I'm the Chair of the IAC.
Joy Layden, NFP.
Do I have one microphone?
We'll yell. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us to speak before you. So Joy and I work for NFP. We're your insurance advisors. We work at the direction of Anita's office and through the Board of Selectmen. What we wanted to do this evening was, you want to hand this over? Okay. What we wanted to do this evening was to update the Board of Selectmen on what's going on in healthcare activity for fiscal year 19. As you know, the healthcare plan that's provided to the employees from the Town of West Boylston renews on each July 1st. So a couple of things we wanted to make you aware of was, we've had several meetings with the Insurance Advisory Committee. That's the Town's Board made up of union employees, retirees, that discusses annually what the activity is that's going on with the healthcare plan on an annual basis. And they're invited to review options and discussions. And then if there's any recommended or contemplated changes, the Insurance Advisory Committee is engaged and an opinion is obtained as to whether or not the town has a recommendation for this year's healthcare plan. So by background, the healthcare plan for July 1st of 2018 renews with the Town's health insurance provider Fallon. And this year, after a couple of discussions, the final rate adjustment was 8.53%. So what that means is each year, not any news to anyone, the healthcare plan cost increases annually. And no surprise that in Massachusetts, municipalities' healthcare trend continues to be somewhere in that 8% to 10% range. Larger groups tend to have a more favorable renewal. Smaller groups have a tendency to have a larger one. The way our premium rates are established is by the claims data incurred by the membership, recorded by the claims by the insurance company, and then projected or trended into the future. So a couple of things. Reasonable expected increases for this organization, given the plan design, again, reasonable and appropriate, was in that 8% to 10% range. And one of the things that we've done with the Insurance Advisory Committee, union employees, is introduce to them a couple of ideas to try and reduce their rate of increase as best as possible. You might recall that last year, competitive bidding, moving the plan from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare to Fallon resulted in a more favorable result. Fallon had a couple of additional options for the membership, including direct care, which is a limited network plan. But what did not happen last year was a change in the employee benefits at all. So, you know, one of the things we mentioned to the members this year is that while I suggest that 8.53%, while still a challenge to the Town's budget, was a favorable renewal, I think we had a recommendation for the IAC members to continually look at innovative ways to reduce their rate of increase as best as possible. The plan here is extremely robust. Literally, members have a healthcare plan where just simple copays are the responsibility of their cost-sharing features. We haven't yet introduced any deductibles or other cost-sharing features that are pretty contemporary with a lot of other cities and towns and school districts in Massachusetts. If I can benchmark for a bit, the state's largest healthcare plan, the Group Insurance Commission, has higher deductibles. And then, in addition to deductibles, have cost-sharing with higher copays after those deductibles are incurred. Generally speaking, plans that have that level of cost-sharing tend to trend lower and have more improved results during an annual renewal period. So what we did this year was, we recommended to the Insurance Advisory Committee, the direction of Marcia and her team, considering some tweaks to this year's plan, to try and reduce the rate of increase as much as possible. In working with the partnership that's been established with Fallon, we did introduce this year a simple deductible addition to the plan. Or in other words, all of the planned copays remain exactly the same, except we added a $250 deductible on a plan-year basis to the healthcare plan, select care, which is the most populated arrangement. And the way that plan works is, for certain expenses, you must satisfy $250 in out-of-pocket expenses, not for office visits, or it's not for prescription drugs. So the more or less the frequent use medical services don't have the application of the deductible, but some of the other plan features do. The way the plan works is, once the deductible is incurred, then benefits are provided. Members are limited to $250 for a plan year, and in no event would any family member combined have more than $500. So what that did is reduce the rate of increase on select care from, I think, 8.5% to about 6.11%.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what we did do was preserved the entire plan in its current structure for the direct care, which is a second network plan offered through Fallon. That's a reduced or limited network. There's no plan design changes on that plan. So we're only recommending it on the more robust, larger select care plan. What this does is allows members who may not want to incur that expense, take advantage of flexible spending conference, this offsets some of those cost-shifting, they could enroll in direct care and maintain the same level of benefits and still see reduced rate of increase because that plan is lower cost. So we've set up the plan for members to, if they are okay with it, can remain in select care, incur that expense, reduce their rate of increase, or we preserve direct care with no plan design changes whatsoever. So the combination of which was designed to get the rate increase to below 7%. So the average budget adjustment would be about 6. With migration into direct care, we might actually benchmark better than that. But ultimately, we thought the game plan introduces the idea of a deductible, kind of gets us going into our long-term strategy, which will undoubtedly include more recommendations for cost-sharing features that more benchmark to the GIC level, 500 individual and 1,000 family, for instance. And then obviously educate the members on how the plans work. They're not yet familiar with how the deductible works with Fallon, but we were planning on meeting with Fallon and educating the members to understand how the new program would actually be implemented. We can tell you that the Insurance Advisory Committee, after some pretty good debate, felt comfortable in recommending that this would be an appropriate direction to go into. That's that part of the process. The Town still has an obligation to reach out to each of the individual units, which the Town is doing and has done. And each of the unions theoretically should ratify the recommendation from the IAC, and then we would present that to you as sort of the overall recommendation for the year. Most of the unions have been okay with the change, and some of the, one of the larger unions are looking for a little more information, which we're going to kind of retool and meet with that organization next week to give them more data, if you will, kind of explain what our rationale was, and at least get them on board with understanding why there's a long-term strategy with this minimal change for fiscal year 19. So where we stand is, we're hopeful to get that other union to agree to the recommendation as well, and then we'd have unanimous, if you will, town-wide acceptance of the proposal and then moving forward. Every point we can reduce this year, obviously, is one less point compounded in the future. So it's really critical to get our baseline down as low as possible, as early as possible, and as often as possible. So where we stand is, most of the unions are on board, and then we're going to work to meet with the other large union that is still looking for more information. Questions?
Is the 83K at the, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is the 83K savings versus renewal, that's at the very bottom of your chart, is that the result of adding the $250, $500?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Are we at 80% cost to town?
I thought we had changed.
It depends where you are, what your date of hire was. Majority of our employees are at the 70, 30.
That's what I thought. Okay. So that number could change.
Yes.
Okay. My other question is, these deductibles, from what I've seen out there, are very low. Extremely low.
We would, yeah.
I mean, I've seen mostly 1,000 for a single and 2,000 for family.
Sure.
In my industry and in being out, in talking to other people. So these deductibles seem very low to me, as a positive for our Town's people.
Well, I think we'd agree with that. We're trying to balance some recommendations that encourage the group to understand these are necessary. This isn't a right or wrong strategy with plan construction, but it's very contemporary. One of the things we want the group to understand is that the real, the only thing we can control here, because we can't control insurance carrier pricing, we can't control provider reimbursement levels, what we can't control is the way the plan is constructed. We do know, actually speaking, a plan with a deductible tends to trend lower, so it will favor them with premium costs over a period of time. I think the point here was, the introduction of a minimal deductible would help us kind of introduce further changes in the future. With all respect, I know that the 6% increase is still a challenge, but from a healthcare plan perspective, it's not catastrophic. Or in other words, it's not 15% or 18% or 19%. Joy and I have other municipal groups that are looking at some real large rate increases. And again, I'm not being disingenuous to suggest that 6% still isn't a challenge, but it seems like a balanced result from what we're trying to accomplish this year.
And did you only talk to Fallon, or did you go out for bid? You had mentioned last year, so why wouldn't we not go out for bid again this year?
So we're at a competitive disadvantage to go back out to bid after just being with one insurance carrier for six months. We didn't want to put the Town in position where if we got a negative rate increase, that we didn't have any leverage. So we thought that at some point, it would make sense to consider an RFP, but this would have been the third carrier change in three years, which typically in the insurance industry is not a favorable position to be in. So again, we recommended that based on the balanced increase and changes, that this was appropriate. I just want to keep in mind, folks, that we have built in an inflationary challenge here, excuse me, an inflationary tool by having the Fallon direct care, which is a limited network plan, basically uses the old Fallon clinic providers exclusively. By moving people from the robust select care into the limited network direct care, which is really only available through Fallon at this point because of the size of its plan, we probably will move bodies over. We would lose that if we left this carrier. There's other plans with limited networks, but this one is the more, if you will, popular in the area. That being said, yes, I do think that the team would probably want to consider competitive bidding in the future.
Anita, do we know how many, I think at one point last year, the year before, we had the majority of our people were on Fallon, but then there were some that were kind of, I want to say grandfathered in or on a special, is different kind? Is that still the case? Do you know?
Not for active employees.
Might be the senior plan, yeah.
Not for active, okay. Must have been for retirees. So how does that affect this?
So this is only for the active employees.
Okay.
We'll be doing the renewal for the retirees in a few months.
Separate. Okay.
Anita, is this the increase that you used in building the budget?
Actually have a higher number in the budget than this, because there's no guarantee yet on this when I was building the budget, so that, you know, if we're able to, you know, get all the unions to agree to this, and this comes to fruition, then we'll have some additional leeway, additional cushion, so to speak, in the health insurance budget.
How can I have that, remember?
I do not, I'm sorry.
You could just email me that.
Sure.
I guess email all of us that.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any questions? No questions. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So we'll be coming back for a formal vote, hopefully at your next meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. New business review and discuss open meeting law complaint from John Shlecht.
So we can basically pass over that. The good news is that the PEG Board, who was the committee that the complaint was against, PEG Board has, had scheduled a special meeting to review the complaint. At that meeting, they did a review of the minutes that were alleged to be in violation of the open meeting law. They agreed that edits were necessary to that set of minutes. They agreed that night to amend, so they have since amended those minutes, and we have submitted all of that to the AG's office and copied that to John Schleckte. So in terms of the necessary town response by the PEG Board, it's all done. So now we'll just be waiting to make sure that the AG's office is satisfied with the response.
No, I think so. When I read through this.
This is a whole different.
It appeared to be a complaint against the Board of Selectmen, because we wouldn't let him start questioning us as part of the public comment section. My.
I think you are thinking about another complaint.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the second complaint.
No, he answered the first one.
No, he's saying that, this complaint that I'm reading says on 11718, "We would not allow him to start questioning us and asking all sorts of questions during the public comment," and he said that that's not, that it was an open meeting violation, when the public comments section specifically says.
Pat, you're correct. You're correct. I was looking at the other one.
So, I mean, clearly, I'm not a lawyer, but this is clearly not an open meeting law violation. It specifically says that this is to voice your opinions, it won't be discussed, it won't be, you know, it's just to voice your opinions, and that's what we said. He started asking other questions, and Chris said, "No, this is not what the public comments section is for," and now he's complaining that there's an open meeting law violation. I don't even understand what the complaint is.
I think it might be important if we could read out what's actually written in the agenda for every meeting, so that the people understand what the policy of the public comments section is. If you don't mind, I'll take a minute to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it says that "The 15-minute period is an opportunity for the public to address their concerns and questions regarding town operations and programs to the Board. Except in urgent circumstances, any matter presented for consideration by the Board shall not be discussed in detail nor acted upon by the Board at this meeting. A scheduled time on a future agenda may be set at the Board's discretion. Complaints or criticisms directed at staff, volunteers, or other town officials should not be permitted. If we do not have open session items to discuss, other agenda items may be brought forward earlier." So in terms of his complaint, that he was not allowed opportunity to ask or have questions answered during the public comments section, he did state his questions. The Board simply did not discuss or answer those questions. And you are not obligated under this policy to bring it up at a future meeting. You have the discretion to determine if you wish to bring it up at another meeting. And you have not chosen to do that.
So to Pat's point, this is for the, is there another one coming then?
There was one directed at the PEG Board, which has been dealt with.
Which is the one that you were talking about previously.
Correct.
So this is still.
So how are we going to answer this? How are we going to answer this one?
The thing is, the way he is interpreting is, this is what I'm getting at. Public to address their concerns and questions regarding the town operations. Maybe we need a clear, clear language over there. So I think, you know, on that day, you know, he was trying to ask some question towards us. That time, Chris was the acting chair and the vice chair, and he was the one, he said, "You cannot ask any questions." So I think, you know, he was, the way he may be understanding is, you know, here is a questions. I'm asking you a question. But, I don't know, this actually reads like, public has a concern or a question, they can come forward and tell the Board. So I think, you know, there may be a language problem here.
I couldn't disagree more.
Yeah.
I could not disagree with what you said more. It very specifically states that it will, shall not be discussed in detail nor acted upon by the Board at this meeting. The language is clear and it's concise. He presented some questions, he presented some concerns, and we listened to what he had to say, and the chairman didn't feel that it warranted being added to a future agenda item. And he may not like it, but it's clearly not an open meeting, it's not an open meeting violation. Clearly not an open meeting violation.
No, the thing is, you know, here, public to address their concerns, the first one line, first line, you know.
Okay.
And the questions regarding town operations. So, questions means, you know, he is trying to ask a question towards the Board of Selectmen. He was trying to ask one couple of questions on that time, and then that's the time Chris said, you know, "No, you cannot ask questions."
So.
We need a clarification over there.
I think the best thing to do is forward this to the AG's office, and, "Oh, do you think that we need to respond to that somehow? We have to respond."
We do have to respond. We do have to respond to it, but we can, we can explain to them that it was discussed tonight.
Yeah.
That, you know, and you may want to, as a Board, you know, make a vote as to whether or not you feel that there was any violation that occurred. Or if you, you know, after additional discussion tonight, you may decide that you want to take action and bring this matter up again at another meeting. But whatever your action is tonight, we will send a letter to the AG's office and let them know that it was discussed, and this is how you plan to move forward. If you decide to take no further action, you know, the letter to the AG's office was that you, that the Board feels that no violation occurred and no action is needed.
So this, the word "question" is not referring to he can ask questions. Is that right?
The policy states, as I read it, that they're allowed to bring questions forward, but it specifically says that there's not to be any discussion in detail during the public comment. They're basically, what the intent of that is, is that people are allowed to bring their concerns forward to be considered at another time. It's not meant to be an opportunity to discuss the concerns in detail.
So when I read that, his complaint, you know, he says, you know, "I was not, I was told during my intended remarks that there was to be only public comments, and no questions would be allowed."
He answered, I think, is what he's saying.
But, can, that's, we need some clarification here, but I'm a little bit.
The way it's written is, it's up to the Board and the Chairman to decide, one, if they're going to be addressed later, or, two, if we warrant a discussion at some point. That's the understanding, and that's exactly what you were saying, that's what it says.
There's several, there's actually two decision points for the Board during a public comment session. You can determine if it's urgent enough of an issue to discuss right then and there. You have the ability, if you determine that it is very urgent, you have the ability to actually discuss it in detail at that time. If you have not determined that it's that urgent that warrants immediate discussion, then you, as a Board, have the ability to say that you might bring this forward at another meeting. You are not obligated to, you just have the ability to bring it forward to another meeting if you determine it's necessary. Also gives you the ability to say, "It's not necessary, and we're not going to continue the discussion about it." You, just a suggestion for the Board, you might want to take the opportunity to look at the video from that meeting and just refresh ourselves in terms of what actually was said during that discussion. So if you'd like, we could take time, bring this back on our next agenda, take time to look at that.
And also, you know, if you are bringing it to next agenda, you know, we may need some clarifications. Only one thing is, you know, public to address their concerns and questions regarding town operations. Questions means they can only say questions, or can they ask the questions to the Board of Selectmen? The Selectmen can choose not to answer it.
Correct. This allows them to raise the question.
I agree, totally agree. But the chairman at that time, you know, Chris Ruccio, you know, he said, "You cannot ask any questions at all." I remember that very well.
And I don't recall if that's the case or not, Raj. That's why I think it might be helpful to look at the video.
The minutes do say that.
Yeah.
It does say, I just read through the minutes, "Mr. Ruccio informed Mr. Schleckte that this is a public comment and no questions can be asked." I would like to see exactly what context that was set in.
So let's bring it up for the next Selectmen's meeting, and that way Mr. Ruccio will be here also.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, Mr. Chairman? My only question is, don't, we have only so many days to answer?
We do, and what I'll do is, I'll send a letter to the AG's office, CC Mr. Schleckte that this is what we plan to do to proceed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Pat's favorite thing. ABM peer review, review of consulting proposal.
So, if you don't mind, I'll.
Go ahead, take it over.
I'm reading this proposal, and the proposal, basically, the way I read it, I don't know if everybody else read it, basically says, "We can do this for you. It's going to cost..." How many money? $5,200. "We can do this if you really want us to do it, but I think you're wasting your money." That's the way I read this proposal. The guy's basically saying that, it's very unlikely that there's recourse at this point to change the approach, which we weren't looking to do, but looking at this, I mean, if anybody has any.
So I think what they're saying is, ABM's going to win no matter what, how the end comes up, they're going to make it so it's in their favor.
So that, and I did speak with Pete from the Finance Committee offline about this, and I said, "We're looking to go forward with," and he reviewed the contract, not in-depth, but looking to go forward to hire someone, and his response was, "I think you're wasting money." So as much as I don't like any of the practices that this company, what they told us, what they said.
What they did.
I don't like anything that they've done. I can't see spending the money to have somebody else tell us that, yeah, they're in accordance with the contract and they're, the state says this is what they have to do, and they've met those guidelines. So, anybody else?
I agree. You know, like I said, they're going to find a way to make it work under the contract, no matter what sayings come out, so I agree with you. I said, "We just drop it and save the town $5,000 or whatever it is."
There was an email, I don't know if we can discuss this now under this, because we're looking at ABM peer review, there was an email that Anita had sent, basically saying that we're, Anita, if you could just explain.
Sure. I didn't send it to the entire Board, I sent it to Pat for his feedback, but ABM kind of placed me on notice, saying that they have a quality control type company that they work with that wants to contact me next week to set up an opportunity to interview the Town, to, you know, basically assess our, you know, our perceptions of ABM. And knowing that, you know, we have had some significant concerns about this, I had asked Pat if he, you know, wanted to be part of this process, and he thought that the best way to approach this would be to use an opportunity at tonight's meeting to seek feedback from all of you in terms of what comments we should be providing to this survey firm. I don't need answers tonight, but, and I, they said that they'll be contacting me next week to schedule, not that it will take place next week, but I'm thinking that if you could all provide me some suggested comments and feedback that you would like me to share with this firm when they do call me, if I could get that by Monday morning, that would be really helpful.
If there, I read this briefly at work, I'm obviously busy, if this is something that we can do after, you know, like April 25th or 26th, then I would absolutely have no issue doing, you know, doing the call. I just can't do it before the end of tax season.
So at the end of April.
Beginning of May.
Okay.
But also, but in the meantime, if you do have specific concerns or questions, what have you, just feel free to send them over to me, and we'll make sure that they get in the mix.
All right. DCI requests for consideration of citing ALB wood disposal facility. Well, anybody else feels? I cannot believe they would, anybody would think that would be a good idea for this town. We have enough beetles on our own, we'll bring in more and.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say that this is not a formal request? It was just something that, as you can see, we received through the website-based portal, and they are just reaching out to all the area towns to see if there would be any interest in citing a facility. And, you know, that's not a decision I can make, so that's why I'm bringing it before you to get your feedback. The good news is that, you know, Nancy did meet with the representative, who said that there have been no active beetle sightings in our community, so that's the good news. But when I spoke to him afterward about this, he did say that if a facility was cited on town, they could not give us a 100% guarantee that beetles would not be brought in in the process of the wood disposal.
So I would like to vote on this board.
I'll make a motion to say, "No, we do not want the Asian Longhorn Beetle Wood Disposal Facility in West Boylston."
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was an easy one.
It was an easy one.
All right. U.S. spokesman, consideration for assignment of authority, Mr. Ruccio did ask, if he's not here, if we could put this off when he gets back, if that's okay with anybody else?
So we'll put that on the agenda for the 18th?
Yeah. Consider approving the hire of Lynn Parker as a seasonal laborer for the DBW effective April 9th until October 30th for 2018 at the rate of 1462 per hour.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
This is me. Has he, just for the season?
It's just for the season.
Right, just like, we're hiring.
Right, just like, we're hiring on time, like we're supposed to, and the parks aren't way behind, like we've done in the past.
Correct, we, we wanted to make sure that we could get somebody in as early as possible. And luckily, he's in a situation where he is able to stay through the full season, he's, this is not a case of having a college student who has to, you know, leave early, so...
Right, I didn't see anything in here, and maybe I missed, is he from town?
He is from out of town, but he has worked at the DPW for a number of years.
Oh, yeah.
So, he's familiar to us doing a good job.
Doing this particular job?
Yes, yes. You may recall that he was actually brought on for a longer-term assignment during that interim period where we were without a DPW director.
Okay.
But now he's just... Yes, it was all posted, yeah.
And no, no, but, no one from town came forward?
Um...
Or this is a recommendation?
There were two applicants. Glenn is from town?
He is from town.
Okay.
Yes, okay, and this is on...
This is which's recommendation?
All right, thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All business, next step for cemetery land proposal, again, Mr. Ruchow, he's on the board for the cemetery acquisition, he wants, we can put this on until next meeting, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay.
He should have postponed the meeting.
Town administration report.
Okay, so I don't have a long report this week, just wanted to let you know that we have been in active conversation with the St. Pierre family, they've reached out to the town to get some feedback from staff regarding the feasibility of developing a retirement community-style housing on the remaining 24-acre parcel that they have on their Century Drive development. They were just looking for some feedback in terms of the feasibility, so, we had a, an impromptu meeting with the Building Department, DPW, Water, Light Plant, Fire and Police, that was held on March 27th. There were no real obstacles that were identified during that discussion, which was a good thing, so the St. Piers will now be reaching out to developers to, you know, determine if there's any market interest in that proposal. So, just wanted to keep you aware, economic development is one of your goals for the year. As to, there had been a question, a meeting ago, as to where we stand on the expenditures for our legal account for the year. As of the end of February, our expenditures were at $43,997, leaving $36,003 to cover us for the remainder of the year. We're, we're in good shape in terms of the cash flow in that account for the year. We do have formal notice from Mass DOT that should begin shortly, in early April, they will begin rebuilding, as they call it, the Route 12, Route 140 intersection here in the center of town. The work will involve some milling of the pavement, repaving, adjustment of the drainage structures, line painting, and improved signage. I'm sure that you're all aware of the heaving that has been, you know, in that pavement, it's caused a problem with some, you know, some accidents that have been happening, so it's good news that this work is gonna be done. They're in coordination with the Police Department, Fire Department regarding any signage details, detours, et cetera, whatever might be necessary. And as soon as we know more about, you know, when they actually intend to start, we'll be putting information out there to the public.
Do you know if they're gonna change anything in the, the tour in the island?
There's no plan to do any physical relocation of it yet, that, as you recall, is part of what the Transportation Committee is looking at for a potential TIP project, so this is merely just a, a stopgap measure, so to speak, to improve the quality of the pavement within the intersection as it exists right now.
Okay.
Mr. T. Is that something that they're aware of as well, that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we actually went and had a meeting with them, and this was where we told them how bad the quality of the pavement was, which is why they put it under their, their maintenance contract to be done ASAP. They recognized that, you know, if and when we do get a TIP project going, that this will all be dug up, but they felt it was enough of a safety factor that it needed to be done now and not wait.
Easy to spend out of people's money, I guess.
Like, for me, I just would say, why wouldn't we do it all at once, and... It's so far off for a potential TIP project.
Oh, it is.
It would be years off, that would, we would be lucky enough to get anything in terms of an intersection change, so they felt it needed to be done now.
Okay.
And then, just wanted to let you know that we have applied to the state for a grant for some various different software services to upload our sewer and water tie-in cards, which would allow our staff to have easy and immediate access to our online GIA system. It would allow them to access all the infrastructure data for each parcel on, on town, rather than having to go back to the various different offices and access the old paper records that we have. We should hear back from, by sometime in July regarding the status of that application. But in the meantime, however, within our own FY18 budget, we've already made some improvements by putting in a structure that allows staff to do our own updating of the property record cards for the, from the Assessors Office. Before, we had to rely on the consultant to do that for us, it was basically, it was done only once a year, and by having this new provision available, it allows us to do the updates as necessary, also allows us to upload some other related documents, such as photos or specific documents related to parcels that are important bits of information. So, there's some good improvements that are happening within our IT department. And just to let you all know that as of the end of March, our snow and ice deficit at this point is $166,621. So, it doesn't include some of the more recent icing events we've had, and it certainly isn't taking into account whatever we might get on Friday, but, the good news is, it could be worse.
I had sent you an email, I don't know if you responded, what, we have set a earmarked out of free cash to cover that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not get to you, I, I believe it was 2:25 that we had set aside.
So we're in good shape?
Yeah, I think we are. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. All right, fifth of the proposal, senior center project construction sign, anybody had a chance to take a look at it?
So it will be called the new West Boylston Senior Center?
Is this, like, is it gonna say south elevation in new, in the words new, or is this a...
This is just what the architect's proposing, you can make any modifications to it that you would like.
I think we should take new off.
Yeah.
Take south elevation off.
And south.
Anything else, guys?
Do we have the one for here, does it say the general contractor and structural engineers?
This is just the construction sign?
It's not the...
This is not the actual plan?
Oh, okay, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
I still think we should say new off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather take the new off it, and the south, I agree.
So why don't we make a motion with approval with those changes, unless there's anything else anybody sees?
So move.
Second?
And also, when it comes to the permanent sign, it will be a different one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Instead of voting on OPM service contract with Colliers, that's to compare to...
Unfortunately, we didn't have it in time for tonight's meeting, you have a choice of waiting for the next meeting, or you, if you're willing, you could authorize the chair to sign, with the condition that the language must be approved by Town Council.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, appointments, resignations, Anita, I'm gonna let you read this, I don't lose my mind.
Sure.
Anything to get out of reading all.
Okay, so for this month's appointments and resignations, we have Board of Health, we have Bob Beryl and Ms. Sean Fowler, for the Conservation Commission Associate Member, we have Alan Phillips, Council on Aging, Janice Ash and Barbara Mard, Cultural Council, Lauren Espy and Janet Johnson, Animal Inspector, Stephen Jones, Assistant Animal Inspector, Robert Beryl, Hazardous Waste Coordinator, Thomas Welch, Assistant Hazardous Waste Coordinator, Alan Phillips, Government Representative to CMEM SC, Bill Nukason, Ambulance Rep to CMEM SC, Colby Fisp, First Responder to the same agency, Richard Elberg, Emergency Management Director, Thomas Welch, Assistant Emergency Management Director, Alan Phillips, CERT Coordinator, Jesse Boucher, Right to Know Coordinator, Thomas Welch, Forest Warden, Thomas Welch, Parks Commissioner, Jeffrey Legendra and James Padone, being the school representative. For the Police Department Chief of Police, Dennis Minnick, Constable, we have Dennis Minnick, Thomas Balvin, Frances Glynn, Anthony Papandrea and Michael Pavone. For Matron, we have Mary Alstrom and Abby Parkinson, Town Council, we have KP Law, Town Common and Bandstand Use Advisory Committee, Patricia Berry and John McCormick, Assistant Building Inspector, Richard Bregy, Louis Pepe and Christopher Lund, Wiring Inspector, Michael Capone, Assistant Wiring Inspector, Dennis Dean and Michael Franciosi, Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Eric Johnson, Economic Development Committee, John Hadley, Town Scholarship Committee, Janet Johnson and Karen Fotos, which is a school designee, Solid Waste Advisory Team, we have Baurajesh Kumar, Raj from our committee, we have the Agricultural Commission, Esseagl Filbin, we have Celebrations Committee, Peter Rotondo, Michael Mulryan and John McCormick, Facility Implementation and Strategic Planning Committee, we have each member of the Board of Selectmen.
Can I ask you a quick question? Alan Phillips is still in town? He's still there?
Yes.
Did he sell the house?
They haven't moved yet.
Oh, he's removed?
I don't know if they're leaving town, but they're still here.
So you put the house, house... So move, I guess?
Okay. Do you vote on that?
Do we need a formal?
Vote to concur?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to vote to concur with the appointments and resignations.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting invitations and announcements, request from the Board of Selectmen, how they would like to be notified if events are announced at Board of Selectmen meetings.
The reason why I put that on the agenda was that I just wanted to make sure that I'm meeting your expectations in terms of letting you know when things are happening. You know, we've been trying to add announcements of various things at the end of our meetings, doesn't always happen. Is the board relying on being notified by the website distribution notifications, or are there certain things that you would like us as staff to make sure that we get to you specifically? I guess I'm looking for feedback from the board.
I know Chris had an issue with, he didn't know about something, I, the emails, between the emails I get and the blogs I get, from the stuff I subscribe to, I don't have any issues.
For me, you know, email will be good. We could, we look at the emails, emails would be good.
I missed some of the emails, but that's not...
I think what he was saying is something that, which you weren't even aware of, I mean, it wasn't a town activity.
It was a town activity in that it was, what he, what Chris was referring to was the, the special event that was recently held at the Wachusett Country Club, dealing with the, the teen brain was the topic, and there was a specialist that was brought in to talk about the effects on teenagers of opioids, alcohol, drugs. And, there was quite a bit of notification about the event, it went out through the town's listserv to anybody who subscribed to them, it was also advertised on the paper, there was on the electronic signboard, et cetera, so, there was a lot of information out there about it. I did not bother to send out additional notices to the board, so I guess my question to you all is, are you expecting that I would forward those types of things to you on an automatic basis, assuming that you might not get the listserv notices? You know, I, obviously, we don't have time to send you everything, but, if I could get some additional feedback from you all in terms of, when is it that you want to make sure that we send you special notices about things?
Can, can we put this next meeting? Maybe Chris might say something?
Sure.
Sure. Because he is the one raised the question.
Yeah, I would state, though, if, if you, if we're having a meeting and you know something is coming up, and it, maybe at that point, we could also make the announcement.
Right, under the news, there's an announcement, says we have been.
Yeah, yeah. Because sometimes I'm sure we're having a meeting, the agenda's done, and then it, it might click, but that could just be another way to give everybody the information, but I have no problem putting it on the next agenda.
All right, then, Economic Development Task Force has, we picked, Reservoir Garage is gonna be on the sign for, the gateway sign, in Route 12 and coming off Exit 4, so he's the first one that we have a paying customer for, so we're very proud of that, three months and so, doing good, but hopefully we get some more people interested in it, and we can actually put a few more signs up around town, so, it's a good thing. Future agenda items, Siobhan?
I'm fine for now, thank you.
I got a couple things, I've been harping on this for a couple years now, around Goodell Park, there's not enough signage, I was talking about a flash and crosswalk signs, the spring sports are about to stop, start, rather, can we, can you ask Bush to look into buying, they have pop-up crosswalk signs that, that, you put them in the middle of the street, they're probably, I would assume they're fairly inexpensive, that just say, stop for pedestrians and crosswalks, I, I think that will make the cars slow down, to put them in the crosswalks on Goodell Street and Crescent Street for the spring sports seasons, I think it will, it will help.
On Central Street as well?
No, Goodell.
Goodell, Goodell Street...
Goodell, is it crosswalk? Okay.
And then you take a left, that's Crescent Street, right?
Yeah.
Left onto Crescent Street.
All right.
Future agenda items, the, the Capital Investment Board is gonna take this up at one of their two meetings this week, but since we're not meeting for another two weeks, can we put on the agenda a review of the charter for the Capital Investment Board? I, I put it on next, next week's or two weeks from now, don't know if the CIV will be ready, we could always pass over it, but I just want to get it on there. And then the last thing is, as the public probably just heard, there were 30 or so positions, appointments and resignations, some of those are for employees of the town, various parts of their jobs, but a lot of them weren't, and I'd like to thank all of the residents who stepped forward and volunteer their time, and encourage anybody that's thinking about getting involved, there's a lot of openings out there that we could use help, so, if you, if you're thinking about it, go on the website, and there's a bunch of different committees, if any of them interest you, please contact Anita to step forward and volunteer.
Thank you, Pat. Raj?
No, I don't have one.
The only thing I have is, I have the reviews for you, your review, so, like to schedule for next meeting to go over in public, do you usually do that?
The contract calls for workshop review.
So how would we do that?
Could we do a workshop prior to next Selectmen's meeting?
Okay. Good. Anything else, anybody have?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.